Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Matroni?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Please join me at the ready call and say in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and give the table. Join me and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes of council meeting, July 27.
Yes, that's me. Sorry, I'm trying to get organized here. We have so many minutes. I do have the meeting minutes from July 27 here, and I did not hear anybody from council have any concerns at this point, so I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for City Council held on July 27, 2021. It's written in a dispense with a reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Second and yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Use special reports. We have no special reports. Letters, communications, citizen concerns. If you're here for a particular item that's covered by a committee, we'll wait till that time to talk about it, but if you have anything else, come forward. Okay? Administrative reports. Again, I want to take this opportunity to thank all those involved with the Inclusive Park, Wood County Place. If you've had a chance to be out there, it is amazing structures and facility and real accomplishment for Wood County Place to make that happen. But even more amazing is the amount of people who can play on that who wouldn't otherwise have access to playgrounds, so we want to thank them for that.
Excuse me, Mayor. Are they going to be fixing the area near the playground? I was informed that that is slightly damaged.
Yeah.
For the kids.
Yes. Want to also, the summer rec program has ended. Want to thank all those that made that happen. It was again a success. It was good to have everybody outside participating in that and a lot of fun for everyone. And so that's a real good program. It's been very successful, and I wanted to recognize all those that helped make that happen. This, we also want to briefly comment about the public art that's going to be at Woodland Park starting this week. We think it's a real opportunity really will bring people to the community and also be some place for the community together, so we'd like to recognize Robin Ballmer of the TVB for making that happen. We hope people have a chance to enjoy it. And I want to thank everybody. Unfortunately, we've had to go back to wearing masks and other things because of Mike and COVID, so I would do appreciate everybody here today wearing their masks and hopefully we can keep safe and move forward. Having nothing else, city administrator?
You have a report, Your Honor?
Finance director?
I have nothing to report.
Law director?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. President of the council?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of things on the agenda here, so just a reminder there is a-
I'm sorry, I do have one.
I was going to bring that up.
Yeah. I will make the recommendation and then, I have several recommendations, the appointment, they're Allison Westmeyer for Assistant for Prac Committee and Kendy Rowan for the Litter Prevention and Recycling Board, both for one-year terms.
Thank you, Mayor. And Appointment Review Committee did meet earlier this evening, and that was a recommendation of 3-0 to head with both of their appointments, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Westmeyer and Ms. Rowley to the Prac and Litter Prevention Board respectively.
One second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you for serving.
And we do have a public hearing, just as an announcement, on September 7 at 6:10 p.m. for a resoning request from Office Space C4 and another one at 6:15 p.m. for a land use plan update, public hearing, so just want to make those announcements. And then also, I do have Ms. Kathy Mule, sorry, I can't, I'm struggling here today, who is with the Cocoon, who wanted to do a brief presentation about the Cocoon and the services that they provide for Perrysburg, so if you don't mind coming up and using my time for that today.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I am Kathy Mall. I'm the Executive Director of the Cocoon, and some of you may be familiar with our services and the things that we provide for individuals in the community, but we've been trying to do some outreach as we've expanded and are really doing a lot more services for individuals than I think everybody's aware of, and so I appreciate the opportunity to come and take a few minutes of your time tonight to talk about some of the things that we are able to do to support individuals in our, in our community. So the Cocoon is Wood County's domestic and sexual violence agency, so we serve individuals who are experiencing domestic violence, sexual violence, sex trafficking, stalking, sexual harassment, and then we also do some work with adult survivors of childhood sexual abuse. And our goal really is to serve individuals any place that they are in their journey. So we might be working with individuals immediately after an assault occurs, so you know, somebody may experience a sexual assault and reach out to us pretty much immediately after that and ask for assistance. We might be working with individuals many years later after they've experienced a victimization and providing them with the support at that time to help them on their, on their healing journey. And we may be working with individuals as they go through a very long journey in seeking safety and healing, so it really just, we can, we can support folks wherever they are in their journey. So a little bit of our history, we opened solely as a domestic violence shelter 16 years ago, so just this year, we celebrated 16 years of providing services. And so for many years, we housed domestic violence survivors in a shelter facility in Bowling Green who needed really kind of a safe haven, safe emergency housing. What we realized pretty early on is that thankfully, a lot of the people that we serve don't necessarily need emergency shelter, but they need a lot of other services that we can provide to individuals in the community. So that's, you know, having a 24/7 line that they can call and immediately get connected to somebody to start talking about their options. Having somebody on the other end of the line who can assist with safety planning and talking with them about ways that they can reduce their risk, reduce the risk of their children, somebody to help them navigate the legal system. So if there's a criminal case pending, if they want to file for a civil protection order, maybe they're thinking about divorce, custody, you know, having somebody who can really walk them through their options. So we've grown from being solely just a shelter to providing a wide range of comprehensive services for individuals in the, in the community, you know, such as some of those that I just, that I just described. So actually, about 90% of the services that we provide to individuals each year are to folks that are not staying in our emergency shelter. So they're living and working out in the community but are accessing services to help them find that safety. And so we really want to continue to spread the message that we, one, do so much more than shelter for folks, and two, that there's a lot of services and resources that are available to people no matter where they are in their journey, and that our mission and our goal is to be serving the entire Wood County community. You know, unfortunately, our hub is down in Bowling Green, and so I think sometimes folks that aren't as closely connected to Bowling Green don't always know the wide range of services that we provide or how they can reach out and, you know, get the assistance that they need. So we wanted to make sure, you know, that we were continuing to spread the word, you know, that our services are available to the individuals who are living and working in the Perrysburg community. Our advocates travel, so they can meet a survivor wherever they are, so there's no need for them to have to come down to Bowling Green to get services. We can meet them in any safe location. We also have some borrowed space in Perrysburg that we're using right now as sort of a meeting hub, so that we can meet with individuals up here in the community. All of our services are also provided at no cost to survivors, so no matter how little or how much individuals use our services, there's no cost for them to access them. So I appreciate you letting me come and share a little bit about, you know, what, who we are and the services that we provide. Just to put a little bit of context to it, last year, we served 747 individuals who were experiencing domestic or sexual violence that were right here in the Wood County community. The majority of those were individuals, the largest demographic were individuals who were connected to Bowling Green, but the second largest demographic was individuals that were right here in Perrysburg. So we know that there's a need, and we want to continue to be able to spread the word so that individuals know how to, how to reach us and how to contact us. We are on track this year to serve even more survivors than we did last year. About halfway through the year, we had already served 541, so if that trajectory continues, there'll be even more individuals reaching out for assistance this year as well. So I did bring a couple of information sheets that I can leave if individuals want to take those. It has our phone number, and it describes all the services that we provide, so we just appreciate you, you know, taking, allowing me the time and hoping, hoping that you'll help us share the information so that we can continue to make sure that folks know that we're here and available to assist them.
Kathy, I would like to say on behalf of, I love your enthusiasm. I always have, and I'm glad to be part of the Cocoon and being a willing person to help you out. Obviously, I'm happy to spread the word, and I, I do all the time. I know a couple of people that I have sent to you that you have personally helped in a huge way, so I'd highly recommend people do use your services.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that, and I do appreciate your support, so yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You want to make sure you get that information to Bridget or-
Yes, sir.
Broadcast it out to the community.
For sure.
Appreciate all you do. Any other questions from council? No, you guys are already, you, is it Sharon at the municipal court? Does she, she has all your information and utilizes your services, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that lines there directly with the legal part of things, so.
Yes, thank you, yeah. So we, we have a, like a reciprocal relationship with her over at Perrysburg Municipal Court, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you. I, yeah, I want to say my daughter was once a board member in Cocoon, so I'm very familiar with, and I'm very appreciative of everything they do. In fact, I walked a mile in high heels once when you fundraised with me. Still have blisters.
Well, thank you for that, because that's, that's quite a feat, so we appreciate the, appreciate the support for sure, so.
I too have various friends who were board members and founding members, and a good friend of mine volunteered extensively before his death, Doug Meyer.
Yes.
Wonderful person.
Yes. Well, thank, thank you as well.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you for your support. It really does make a difference, because it allows us to continue to do what we're, we're doing when we have the support of the community, for sure.
I will continue to help you out, because I have been helping you for a few years now, and I will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for coming, and we'll definitely take your information, make sure we get that out to as many people as we can.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. That will be the end of the presence of council report.
Thank you. Committee reports, finance and economic development.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Economic Development Committee met on August 10. We have a lot to talk about, so I have a lengthy report, so please bear with me. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 p.m. by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Born, Tim McCarthy, and myself. Also present were Bridget Cabot, City Administrator, Kate Sandretto, Law Director, Amber Rathburn, Finance Director, and Steve Bronder, Income Tax Commissioner. We had approval of minutes, there were no objections, and then we went into the ProMedica Jobs Grant Credit. Ms. Cabot stated that ProMedica has filed a jobs grant application for an 80,000 square foot medical office building and cancer center, and they are, they are proposing on Brigham Drive in Levis Commons next to their existing facility. Mark Rose of ProMedica stated that on their application, they understated, understated the payroll amounts. They are projecting 50 new full-time jobs and 14 new part-time jobs with a payroll of 7.68 to 14.27 million dollars annually. Mr. Rose stated that there will be approximately 300 employees, but the jobs grant applies only to new jobs created in the city. I asked if ProMedica would qualify for a CRA. Mr. Rose explained that they are exempt since they are a nonprofit, nonprofit organization. The jobs grant would be for five years, and Mr. Rose said construction should be completed at the end of 2022, so they would like to begin it on January, on January of 2023. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend approval of the credit and thanked Mr. Rose for their investment into the city. Regarding the records retention schedule, Ms. Sandretto explained that we are required by Ohio law to have a records retention schedule. She said City Council currently does not have one, and she called attention to the proposed schedule that had been sent to the committee. She said that it is in line with the other departments, and Mr. McCarthy asked if attendance records and voting records are different than the minutes. Ms. Rathburn said that Mr. Krebs had a form that he used when he did a roll call, and she has something similar. I asked to define the term until no longer administrative necessarily, what it was referring to, and Ms. Cabot said that it could be an invitation or a thank you note, but the committee agreed 3-0 to forward this to City Council. And that's why I'll stop right here, because I'd like to entertain a motion, and would like to make a motion to adopt that records retention schedule here for our City Council members. If you've all had a chance to look it over.
No, second.
Okay.
There's been a motion, a second discussion.
I would say that since most of my information, in fact, all of it is already out there. I don't think it's necessary to do that. It's unnecessary work for all of us. All of our emails are already out there, and all of our social media, if any of us have it, is already out there, so that's, I can speak for myself when I say that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just going to ask our law director.
Out where?
Electronic.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is a requirement that we require to have retention scheduled per the ORC, is that correct?
Yes, we are. We have one, so different jurisdictions do it differently. Our jurisdiction, we do it by department. This came before City Council, before my time, and was not passed. It is required by the Ohio Revice Code that we have this for all of the city, including City Council. It's not about it being in the public, it's about it being retained and being accessible. If someone calls to make a public records request from us, just because it exists in the public does not necessarily mean we are not required to provide that, that record. So for instance, just because I send an email to any of these fine individuals here who are citizens of our community, doesn't mean that that email is now out in the public. That email can be requested as a public records request because I have sent that email. So that's why this exists. That's just an example of why, why this exists. So, and it's a pretty straightforward standard plan, similar to all the other departments.
Honestly, it seems not as restrictive as I, I make my own. I don't think I ever delete any of my emails in there, and I just don't feel comfortable doing it.
You, you have to have some type of program, a retention program, so as to, it's, to keep it for a certain amount, like the time which, the, and you understand that, because you just, I just can't delete something today and not make it available if our retention program is to keep it six months, correct?
Absolutely.
So, and that's a requirement by state law to provide continuity and, and a base benchmark or however you want to put it, to be able to get public record requests from us for a certain time period, and then, because you can use it actually to hide behind if that were the case. But, you know, like, oh, I deleted it when you weren't allowed to be able to delete it for six months. Am I not right?
You are correct, and there are financial consequences the city can face for failure to comply with this or with whatever our records retention policy is.
Personal and by government.
I would think that since the city already has a record of all of, all of our emails that go out, I know that you do, you could just get them from the IT department and/or you.
I would say that would be-
That's why this needs to exist.
That's, well, what you- It's, sorry to interrupt, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. What, what you're providing us is just says the Ohio history records. That's, that's Ohio history. I mean-
They're the ones who review the records retention schedules for the various communities by, by ordinance and approve, make recommendations for changes, or say that it is not within, it is not satisfactory for the requirements.
Well, I mean, as I've, as I've stated, mine's all out there.
The point of the Ohio Historical Science sets the standard for which the public records need to be retained, and every municipality governmental entity is to have a policy in the event there were, be not compliance, there has to be some way of holding people accountable, so this is a way to make sure that we would be transparent and as an entity and consistent with the law, so that if somebody made their request, we would be able to provide it to them. That's really, basically, and we could, should have had this before.
And for clarification, Mayor, the record retention is each individual council member's responsibility, so it's not about the city being able to pull it, but the city receives a message of what they need. This gives our law director the opportunity to say, well, we can go back this far based off our retention schedule, or, or however we have that, but an email, if we use a personal email for city business, that would still fall under the retention schedule, and it wouldn't be something that the IT department would have access to.
Well, this is also not just about city or council emails, this is a bigger topic about all the record, public records, make sure, how long do we keep playing zoning documents, those kinds of, this is a, this, this sets a more standard throughout this governmental entity and any governmental entity, so that anybody who is seeking information will have, be able to obtain it. That's the clear rules.
And that helps our clique of councilmen, right?
Right, right.
So, this is a pledging of-
It also helps with auditing, when we get audited.
Yep.
Any other questions? We have a motion, a second, I'll roll.
Ms. Born?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Moving on, we have stipulated damages in contracts. Ms. Sandretto stated that the code section dealing with stipulated damages in contracts was last updated in 1987 and is not in line with the current values of contracts. She said that she believes this is the best source to use in the, in the ODOT schedule, which is what our insurance carrier recommends using. Ms. Sandretto said that this is meant to be a hammer in case we have a real problem. There was discussion regarding contractors being aware of this. Ms. Sandretto stated that our contracts typically have completion dates and allowances for certain issues. Ms. Cabot said that there are normally exceptions for weather delays and allows the contractor to request an extension for unavoidable delays, such as delays in receiving materials. Ms. Sandretto said that she can add the clause or other reasons defined by contract to the code language as a catch-all. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend approval of the proposed code language regarding stipulated damages. In the Finance Director's Report, the committee reviewed expenditures greater than $5,000 for the month of July. Ms. Born asked about the payment to Smith Detection, and Ms. Rathburn said that that is for the metal detector and X-ray machine in the atrium. Ms. Born asked why the purchase did not come before City Council, even though it was over $25,000, and Ms. Cabot explained that those were two separate purchases that were paid for at the same time. She said the police chief placed an order for one item and was waiting for pricing from another, other companies on the second item. Mr. McCarthy asked about the payment to Highland Administrative Services for $165,000. Ms. Rathburn stated that was the annual payment for property and liability insurance. Mr. McCarthy asked if the payment to the Fort Megs Y is a monthly payment. Ms. Cabot said that the pool contract is split into three payments. I asked about the water meters we purchased from Nico, and there was a brief discussion regarding the senior center project. Ms. Rathburn reported that the balance in the health insurance fund as of July 31, 2021 was $155,052.42. She said the balance is up, which is good news, but there are some large claims which we are expecting soon. Ms. Born asked about the payments to Front Path, and Ms. Rathburn explained that they are our previous carrier, and those claims from last year that Front Path has processed. For the Tax Commissioner's Report, Mr. Bronder reported that collections for the month of July were $1.6 million, which is down 39% from the same month last year. He explained that this year, there were no due dates in July, but in July 2020, the first and second quarter estimates and 2019 returns were due. He said that year-to-date revenues for the first seven months of the year are a little over $14 million, which is up 14% from 2020. And he said that compared that to 2019 figures, which are pre-COVID, and we are up 2% from the first seven months of 2019. Mr. Bronder said that he feels there are two areas to watch. The first is the withholding taxes. He said that withholding taxes for the first seven months of this year compared to 2019 are up only 2%, or 0.2%, thank you. And with Ohio's starting to see a surge in COVID cases again, it is unknown what effect it will have on businesses. He said the second area to watch is in refunds for employees who are working from home. He explained that as part of the governor's emergency orders, employers were still to withhold taxes based on an employee's principal place of business, even if they were working from home. However, the state legislator, legislature changed that, and with the most recent budget bill, and effective January 1, 2021, employees will pay tax to wherever they are actually working. For example, if an OI employee is working from home in Sylvania for 2020, they paid Perrysburg 1.5%, but for 2021, Perrysburg will not get any withholding tax for that employee. In other business, there was discussion regarding the 2020 audit report. Ms. Rathburn said that the audit report came in on Mr. Krebs's last day with the city, and she said that the auditors recommended that best practice is to have two people look at bank reconciliation each month. She said that her goal is to have the, the new deputy finance director complete the reconciliation and forward it on to her. She will then double-check it against bank statements and computer reports, sign and date it. In the past, she did the bank reconciliation and discussed it with Mr. Krebs, but there was no sign-off then. There was also an issue about inter-fund transfers, and Ms. Rathburn said that she has a spreadsheet where she keeps track of each fund balance and the transfers, and will use the fund transfer, will use it when fund transfers are requested. She will keep this information all together for the auditors to review. I called attention to an email from Mr. McCarthy about questions regarding the American Rescue Plan money. Mr. McCarthy said that Mr. Smith told him that we still do not know the exact amount or guidelines for how to spend the funds. Ms. Cabot said that we believe that we will receive $2.1 million as opposed to the $4 million we initially thought, because it was reduced by 50% to give money to townships. Ms. Rathburn had a webinar the following day regarding the funds. Ms. Cabot said that once we receive final guidance, she will meet with the mayor, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Rathburn. Ms. Cabot said that the deadline to encumber the funds is December of 2024, so there is plenty of time. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6:15 p.m., and so I have two pieces of legislation, vote on, and I would like to introduce ordinance 40-2021 and move that the rules basis suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and a dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 40-2021, admitting codified ordinance 222.01 of the City of Perrysburg Code, codified by ordinance 50-87 and passed on April 1, 1987.
I move that ordinance 40-2021 be passed.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
And I would like to introduce ordinance 40, I'd like to introduce ordinance 43-2021 and move that the rules basis suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and a dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?[1737.78]
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 43-2021 authorizing a job creation grant for Prometica Health System Inc. and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinance 43-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion.
I would like to say I think it's great. Prometica is perfect for the community, and they're going to add a lot to the community. They do a lot for the whole area, and I'm really happy to see them be here.
Roll call.
I just have a quick question with you. Kind of that touches on that change in the Ohio law. Are we asking if some of these jobs are going to be remote or how many are in-house as part of that grant program?
Yeah, well, he said, I mean, in the Prometica case, they're all going to be right there in that.
Office facility.
Yeah. I figured, but I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
That's where we're.
That's going to house about 300 employees with 64 of them being new.
Right.
New employees.
Employees have to be there in the facility, it's not, they have to report that as in the facility, not something that's.
And I think to add to what Mark was saying, I think 50 of the 64 were full-time and 14 are part-time.
And I'm not too worried about it on this project, you know, a hospital project, but I just want to make sure.
Pretty high-paying jobs in there.
I think it's a good, it's a good fair question.
Other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Okay, the next meeting is Finance Economic Development is Tuesday, September 14 at 5:30 PM, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Safety Committee does not have a report. Our next meeting will be on August 24 at 16:01, which is a Tuesday. Thank you.
Recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I hate to be a pain, but with masks are required, would you mind, please?
People need to be able to hear me too.
I understand that.
I don't think you can hear through a mask, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Perrysburg City Council Recreation Committee. Report for the regular meeting, August 10, 2021. Present were Chairwoman Deborah Born, Councillors Jonathan Smith and the city administrator Bridget Cabot. Chairwoman Born called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM in council chambers after roll call and pledge of allegiance. The administrator reported a meeting of 9:11, 2021, 3:20. Chairwoman Born attended present. Citizen Concerns, Tony Wade, 901, Mill Road. A member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee came forward with several questions. He presented photos of municipal woodland and Three Meadows Parks. Then he stated that some of his neighbors are taking their small children to Three Meadows Park because the play area is fenced in on the Three Meadows Pond side, and the pond is only 36 feet from the park. He added that both Woodland Park and Municipal Park are fenced on all sides. Chairwoman Born stated that she agreed that it would be a good idea to build a fence. Mr. Wade stated that he had brought this up at the PrAC meeting, and none of the other members had paid attention, so he decided to come to this committee. Ms. Matroni stated that she thought that it was an oversight that this is not, this had not been done already. Mr. Smith said that he would like to know the cost of the fencing in the area. He also stated that he feels that if the area is fenced, it should not be locked because some people like to take their dogs to exercise their unleashed early in the morning. City Administrator Cabot stated there is no legal requirement that the pond be fenced because it does not exceed the slope necessary to require a fence, which is probably why none was ever built. Mr. Wade stated that the current situation is dangerous and could result in a liability for the city. Ms. Cabot responded that the law director told her there is no requirement for this in the state or city code. Mr. Wade then asked why other parks were fenced. Ms. Cabot reported that she did not know it was done before, because it was done before her time. Chairwoman Born mentioned that Mr. Wade previously proposed a walking trail around Three Meadows Pond and asked why the committee, asked about what the committee felt about this. Ms. Matroni stated that the committee had discussed this before, and she was in agreement with it, but apparently there was some work that must be done first. Administrator Cabot responded that there is an erosion prevention work which needs to be done around the pond, and all necessary funding is in the 2021 budget. The remainder should be added in the 2022 budget, and when the total project is done, the path can be discussed. Under old business, there is no discussion or action on old business items. On new business, under the PrAC appointment, Chairwoman Born asked Ally Westmeyer, who is with us tonight, a student at Notre Dame Academy who had been recommended as a high school member of PrAC to come to the podium. Chairwoman Born said that she had read all of Ms. Westmeyer's information, and she thinks it would make a great addition to PrAC. Ms. Matroni agreed. Mr. Smith asked why she had decided to apply for PrAC. Ms. Westmeyer responded that her ideas, responded that he does volunteer work at the zoo and loves nature, plus she was looking for a leadership position. The committee voted three to zero to recommend approval of her appointment to the full council. Chairwoman Born asked Kevin Fisher, 26256, Wendy Trace Drive, Perrysburg Township, who is the head coach of Perrysburg Hockey, Perrysburg High School Hockey, to come to the podium. Mr. Fisher stated that for a number of years, we've been discussing a hockey arena for the Perrysburg area, and recently work is underway to make this happen. His group has come up with two different plans. One would be for a hockey arena only. The second would be larger in scale and include a senior center and walking trails and other amenities. He emphasized that the hockey arena would be eco-friendly and minimize the footprint. Mr. Fisher added that there are currently four hockey facilities available for the high school hockey in Northwest Ohio, three in Lucas County, and one in Bowling Green. His committee has looked at possible locations of the three, and he believes that Levis Commons would be perfect but too expensive. The vacant Kroger building was another possibility, but he feels that Kroger may want to keep it for themselves. This leaves an area near the Perrysburg Tennis Center on Progress Drive. Mr. Fisher stated that his group is searching for a variety of sources of funding from corporations, charities, and private individuals. He mentioned getting the Perrysburg Garden Club involved. Chairwoman Born pointed out that the Perrysburg Garden Club and the county, excuse me, Country Garden Club are two different groups, and there are actually four or five groups in Perrysburg. Mr. Fisher responded that this will have to be a public-private partnership. He would like to know if Perrysburg City Council would be interested in supporting this. Chairwoman Born asked if the proposed facility would like, would have any other functions as well. Mr. Fisher replied that Councilman Smith had provided him with a feasibility study for a project from the previous administration for a much larger budget, I'm sorry, excuse me, for a much larger project which had been proposed on State Route 582. Chairwoman Born stated that she had appreciated hearing about the project, but asked what the cost would be. Mr. Fisher replied that he had inquired about a feasibility study which would cost $20,000. Also, there would be a $1,000 charge to apply for a 501(c)(3). Ms. Matroni stated that she thought this was a good idea because there are many other amateur hockey clubs of all ages in addition to the high school tennis. I'm sorry, high school teams, sorry about that. Ms. Matroni stated that she thought that, or just read that. Mr. Smith asked if he was correct in assuming that Mr. Fisher was asking if the city was prepared to support this project financially by supporting feasibility study. Chairwoman Born suggested that Mr. Fisher contact the Wood County Economic Development Commission and recall that back in the 1990s, Rossford and Perrysburg Township had attempted to put in a hockey arena in the crossroads, but the effort went belly up. She said that she likes hockey, and she would like to have more information about this. She asked if Mr. Fittr had spoken to the schools about his project, and he replied that he had not. He said the schools have enough difficulty getting their levies passed. Chairwoman Born invited Mr. Fisher to attend the next Recreation Committee meeting. PrAC report. At the last PrAC meeting, members made suggestions including a skate park. They also reiterated that they do not want the Orleans Park parking lot paved and would prefer that the holes which currently exist be filled with stone. PrAC member Tony Wade would also like to see a natural walking path around Three Meadows Pond. The next meeting date is Tuesday, September 14, 6:30 PM. Meeting date, 7:18 PM. Minutes prepared by myself, Deborah Alborn, Chairwoman, August 16, 2021. Thank you.
All right, Planning and Zoning, thank you, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met on August 11 at 5:30. President and myself, and Barry Van Hoozen. Also with us were Green Walters, the Planning and Zoning Administrator, and Mark Easternling, the Deputy Administrator. We began by discussing an email that had been received from business owner Greg Rufti regarding his objection to obtaining a land use permit after letters were issued by the Planning and Zoning Division. Mr. Walters explained that the land use permit used to be called a certificate of occupancy, but the name was changed to avoid conflict with the certificate that the county issues. The purpose of the land use permit is to allow the Planning and Zoning Division to verify that the use of the premises matches the zoning for the property. I asked about how a new business would learn that they need to obtain this permit. Mr. Walters told us that if they inquire about a business license, need a zoning or sign permit, contact the tax division or have a fire inspection done, it would learn that the land use permit is needed. Also, there is information on the city's website. Finally, if they had to get a building permit from Wood County, the county normally requires an exempt zoning permit from the city. Mr. Walters noted that the same issue came up at this business park about five years ago when a new dance studio was moved in, and the use did not match the zoning. Two of the new businesses that have moved into the business park, Super Supper's and Seven Little Cupcakes, do not match the zoning for the property. Mr. Van Hoozen said that making cupcakes seems less intrusive than other industrial uses, and Mr. Walters explained that the zoning is about the compatibility of uses, and also it can be an equity and competition issue. Similar businesses could be paying higher rent to be in a properly zoned area. He explained that although Marsh's Fudge Eyes and Garlic Expressions are located in the business park, they are not retail sites, they are manufactured. Greg Beatty, who is present as a member of the Planning Commission, agreed that it is an equity issue and that the businesses are not the same. Barry Van Hoozen asked where we are at with this issue. The city has issued a final notice which prompted the email. Mark Easternling pointed out several years ago, Massage Business moved near Brody Optometry. Once they were notified that that did not match the zoning for the property, they were given time to relocate. Both Mr. Van Hoozen and I agree that we need to find out what the city knew when they issued building permits for these businesses and when they knew it. I asked if the property could request rezoning to plan business park, but Mr. Walters said they probably don't have the required minimum acreage. So we concluded by asking that Brody Walters check with Wood County, and we asked that his office hold off on enforcement until the committee can discuss the issue again next month. I commented that these are good businesses, and we need to be delicate. Mr. Van Hoozen said that he is not inclined to change the zoning of the property. We also discussed an email that I think all of us had received regarding requests for the city to adopt new legislative procedures for evictions. The committee reviewed information provided by the court showing that in the last two and a half years, 99 evictions were filed within city limits with less than half of them granted. The committee agreed two oh to recommend that the city take no action on this request. We felt that these procedures might be needed in certain larger cities, but based on the volume we have here in the city of Perrysburg, we didn't see the need to create this additional process. We will meet again on Wednesday, September 8 at 5:30 PM. End of report.
Thank you very much. Personnel Committee?
I have no report, but I do have some legislation. So I'll start with introducing the ordinance 39-2021 and move that the rule basis suspended the law for reading by number and title only.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, is there any discussion? Shoot, well, I'm not making a motion.
We're just doing a reading of this.
Just the title?
Yep.
Ordinance 39-2021 and ordinance amending Perrysburg codified ordinance 266.15-1 and 266.15-2.
Okay.
This is Councilwoman, has a discussion?
Yeah, I believe that's the intention, and I want this to be a free reading. I think we're making some substantial changes, so I don't necessarily rush this one through, so. I know there's been some discussion, does anybody want to start?
So I guess I'll just dive right in, because I've had numerous conversations with Bridget. I think Bridget's tired of my phone calls anymore. Just really, I know that there was some emails that was exchanged on some potential changes to this ordinance.
Were there changes in the second reading, or is it still the original from that first reading?
I do believe that the changes are in the ordinance as well.
Okay, and then the question I was going to ask as well is, with what was presented to us as the bands, was this the original, the first reading that we did at the last meeting, were these bands the original recommendation from the company we contracted? Or was this something that was discussed and changed as the conversation continued with the contract?
As I mentioned, I know that we had a series of conversations with the consulting firm, and I do know and recall clearly that we had received several iterations of documents, specifically the salary survey document, which is the largest document that had one page for each individual draft position. We were receiving those all state in real time as they were receiving information back from various jurisdictions. We were getting updates to those. I know the executive summary was also updated. And you may recall, we updated some of the executive summary based on clarifying questions of the personnel committee. You got some of the language in there. We believe that there may have been an original pay band sheet, but I cannot find that email. And I'm in contact with Ashen and Rich to see if I can find that. I tend to not keep old drafts because I get confused and mixed up with like the latest and greatest. But that is still something that I'm looking at obtaining. But I can tell you, the first reading of the ordinance was as the draft that we received as a final draft in the entire packet as it was written. This reading, this draft includes the four changes that were noted in my email from last week. And then in addition to that, we noticed today that we had dropped off one draft position in BNP accidentally. So that is back in, that's the IT network technician. And we did modify the name of one position that was called Superintendent of Lands and湿地 Sanitation to make it more generic to say Superintendent of Field Operations so it could apply across multiple departments and divisions. And then we did note that there was a very first section that is in the ordinance as presented originally, should have been repealed several years ago when we incorporated those four positions into the entire pay matrix. So that was something that we needed to clean up from 2019.
And then a couple other questions I have, I know we have the conversation on, is, so from my understanding is any raises over 7% have to come to council per ordinance for approval. One of the things I would like to see on, and I believe this was something that was discussed at Personnel, and I believe Mr. McCarthy had mentioned this in the actual meeting itself, but was having a conversation of when the raises are given, regardless of if it's under 7% or not, to have those reported on an annual basis to the Personnel Committee. Not anything that needs to be approved at all, but to have that transparency to City Council on what the raises are given would be a benefit to the city to ask questions as to, maybe someone got 6% and someone got a 0%. Just to know what is going on within the budget for the salaries.
Councilman Smith, I neglected to also point out, as the law director looked at me, if you look at the third page of the ordinance, fourth page, right before section two, we did incorporate two suggestions that had been made during the Personnel Committee as well as the Council yourself about notifying the Personnel Committee of increases that take place or reductions in employee salaries if they were devoted, as well as notifying Personnel Committee when we hire those newly confirmed individuals what the salary. Personnel Committee when we hire those newly confirmed individuals what the salary package was in which we hired them.
Okay, because I don't want us to get into an issue, I think Ms. McCarthy mentioned this pretty well, that anybody who is hired has to be approved by City Council, and then you end up at a point where you can never hire anybody. But to have a justification presented to City Council is something that I think would be very important for every one of us up here, so that way we at least have an understanding as to what that came about and why that. And again, we're not saying anything's wrong with the administration.
No, and I do want to clarify, it's not going to be a justification, it's going to be reporting out, strictly administrative choice, and I would say in this administration, like prior administration, when I was on council, I have solicited input on evaluation of employees from council members throughout the process. So more than happy, we have nothing to hide, and matter of fact, your input has contributed to evaluation of staff, so we're more than happy to report out. It is not a justification, it's a report, and we're more than happy to do that.
No, I appreciate, and again, it's not a knock on the current administration, it's more of-
That's fine.
-a conversation moving on what happens if we have that one administration in the future, so that's why I want to make sure the transparency is-
No, it has happened in the past, and so I'm more than happy to provide that to you.
No, I appreciate that. And so that's really where I am, and personally, I would like to, I think, limit, finagle in with the actual bans themselves and listen to what the entity had said, just because it's based off of what, from what I understand, from the last email we got from the entity, is based off of the average men and max across the state, not just anything else, if I understood correctly, is that how I interpret it?
The wage ranges were based on kind of like a calculation of regional, local, regional, as well as looking at the served reports that come out, it's not actually the served report, I can't remember the technical name for it at the moment, as well as known market values for certain positions that we have been challenged in hiring in the very recent past.
Okay. And then that's it for me at this point.
Just a couple comments. First of all, Corey, I thank you for having three readings on this, because this is a pretty significant change for us, and it's given us time to read and study. It makes great sense that the new point system is being adopted, and I think it makes great sense that these ranges are being created. When you have virtually 38 positions that have individual ranges, it just becomes a monster in terms of adjusting for each and every hire. One of the things I did like when I was on Personnel though was that, and Mr. Mayor, there was some justification when we had to grant a change in range, because there was an individual study done for certain positions that we knew we were out of kilter with. And so, and we approved it because we understood that the data said we had to do it. And so I do hope that, and I'm glad to read we're just above Section 2, that that's being included, because that was our, Personnel Committee's participation at that point was, yes, this is-
Yeah, I think we took Personnel Committee's recommendations and looked at it.
Yes.
While they were consistent with that. The four changes were basically consistent with that premise.
Correct, I understand. So I just want to make a comment, that I think that was an important part of what the Personnel Committee did, so I like this change. That's all.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
I just, I still have a couple of questions on a couple of positions through my conversations. Because whenever I look at this, I keep thinking we're putting these positions in the category almost like a hierarchy scheme. I know that's not 100% what we're doing here, but you look at this BNP, and it's basically people that are in charge of budgets, in charge of departments, divisions, whatever you want to call them. And then you ban C, you see deputy, the deputy directors, people that are right up at the department head. So a couple of positions that I'm just curious about, at first, the tax administrator, I was surprised to see him in BNP, given-
So the tax administrator in our team of organization reports to the deputy finance director, who reports to the finance director?
And how many employees does he have reporting to him?
There are, I think currently, four full-time and two part-time.
Does he take care of a budget? Is there-
He does.
He does? It seems like, you know-
We're currently going through a kaizen process this week, kind of deconstructing that division and-
Bridget, you might want to come up.
I usually talk too loud.
We are currently going through a kaizen event this week, it's actually taking place this Thursday. We're doing it with the Bowling Green State University, so they're going to come in and help us deconstruct how that department processes, the information that it receives, the dollars that it receives, and what the reports are that are generated, to see how we can look at it, perhaps in a more efficient fashion, to see what technology we can employ that will better facilitate the process, make the process more efficient, because we do not know if we have too many staff or not enough staff. At this point, we have anecdotal information, so our new finance director is diving into that and is having more direct contact with that division than perhaps we had in the past.
Yeah, if I don't mind, I'd like to just interject. My concern is, I'm wondering if we're focusing too much on the organizational chart and not what the study came back with on what the men and max is for these positions. The way these bans were set is based off of what the men and max are of the salary across the state. It wasn't something about an organizational chart-
Correct.
-of who is in charge of who, but for instance, for the tax administrator, the men and max that came back from the study was a minimum of $67,860 to $85,196. The ban that they're going into is a $50,000 to 100, which falls within that, well within that range, and actually increases the max for that position. From what I'm looking at on here, my concern is, is that, actually, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Perrysburg one, so the survey average, my apologies, I put the wrong title. The average max for that position was $82,000 with a minute at 62, so we're still falling well within that range. And what my concern is, if we start not only too much with the position and the organizational chart, is that affected what we would be looking at with the other competing entities at that point? If we go too far outside of the ranges, you know, it'd be great, we'd probably get all the top talent here, but if we focus too much on what the actual study is, outside of what the parameters of the study was, that's really what my biggest concern is at this point, is I don't want us to lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish.
That might be a conversation for another time.
Ms. Cabot? The way I understand this, going through this, if I'm not mistaken, these are proposed raises, not for today, but just raises for the range for the future? Am I correct on that?
The proposal before you is to change the wage ranges for the various positions into these groupings.
It is not a-
But you're talking toward the future though, right?
It gives, it gives the mayor and/or council the ability to increase actual base wages of an employee within that range.
Right, they're basically positions, not the current person, so for the most part, you would not be changing a salary or anything like that, they're in the range.
Correct.
The goal is to get people in the range and to make it more, to do two parts. One is to make sure that we don't have compression, which has been occurring over 20 years, if you've been on council enough, you know that there's been a compression between management, mid-level management especially, and other staff. And so that we also run the risk of not being competitive on the outside market and also being inconsistent internally, which is also not fair to staff, that one department or one division is getting in this range and somebody else is in that range. So this is an effort, the first step towards that process. Organizational chart has been tasked to be reviewed, as we conveyed to you. Perrysburg has been very fortunate over time to have hardworking, dedicated staff that basically are utility infilters, do a lot of jobs, and as we continue to grow, everybody saw the basic, the census report that says we're now over 25,000, we're trying to get some organizational structure consistent with the community of our size, which is that we hire as needed as opposed to having a long-term plan. That is something we're working on, correct? So this is an effort to do that and to make it a little bit easier for our each department to go out and compete and hire people, not just because Perrysburg is a great place to live and work, but because we pay them fair salary compared to other similar situations.
So I'll just say what my two that I'm still noticing, the tax administrator, I see this as an opportunity to address both of those. I appreciate what John's saying, but at the same time, we are prepping for the future. The tax administrator, you're telling me he's got four or five employees and he's in BNP, that's off to me. I don't know his salary offhand, but my guess is he falls in BNP currently, or is pretty darn close, based on the ranges I'm seeing from the amendment we're making. That, and then just again going for the cohesiveness of this chart, you know, you have the department heads, I know we changed the prosecutor, that's one of the amendments, but then it would also follow that BNP should probably have the assistant prosecutor, deputy prosecutor in that, and that may be a pay increase with that current ban. Those are two things that I guess I would like to explore before the third-
I would say the administration has reviewed those, and we're very comfortable with our current position. I have reviewed those and am very comfortable with them, so this is our recommendation.
Okay.
If council wants to change it, they can, like the salaries of the department or the assistant prosecutors, we felt that those were fair, given the circumstances.
Can you, can I get an email with the salaries of both of those individuals?
Sure.
Aren't they right here? I think they're right here.
They've been part of the-
All right, that's all I have on this one. Anybody else before I move on to the next legislation?
I'm just looking over stuff for a second, so.
All right. All right. So I will go ahead and introduce ordinance 41-2021 and move that through and be suspended to a law for a reading by number and title only, and I'm going to follow the same consistent thought with, this should be a three reading, so I'm not going to pass that either second or third reading, unless there's objection up here for some reason.
I need a second.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. McErnie?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, and-
Ordinance 41-2021, amending codified ordinance 220.07 of the city of Perrysburg codified ordinance, codified by ordinance 57-2017 and passed on August 1st, 2017.
Okay, and this is the city council pay. One of the things I noticed, and our law director, I guess you can, I know it's in your brief here, so this would go into effect, if we pass this, it would apply to those candidates that are currently running for city council and take effect for their term?
Yes, if you look at the way that the ordinances are drafted for raises for city council and for the mayor, the raises for the city, for the mayor make very clear that if it is to go into effect, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to use your term because that's easier.
Just use me.
Thank you. I'm going to throw you right under this bus.
Yeah.
If it were to go into effect for Mayor Mackin, this would have had to have been passed 90 days before May of this year, because this is his last year of service in this term. That language is not in the city council raises, it just says 90 days before, yeah, 90 days before May. I think that's a little weird, but I didn't draft the ordinance, so if this is passed, the three open seats, whoever fills those open seats will get paid the new salary. Then the four open seats that begin January 1st of 2024, they will receive the new salary.
So the language has, it has to be 90 days before May?
That's all it says, just-
So, okay, so theoretically, this election could happen, we could have the same vote, waive three readings with new members on council, and they could retroactively get pay-in-stated, because that would be 90 days before May.
You can't have it, you can't get the pay-in-stated-
During your term.
-during your term. So the reason that it could go, if you're going to vote for this before the November election, then it can go into effect for those three open seats, because the language also says that you cannot receive a raise during the term in which you are serving.
Okay, perfect.
So you have to think of it not as a reelection issue, but as open seats. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation. One of the things I would say on this, I understand where the language is, and I'm not currently in this election, so it wouldn't affect me. If I ran for reelection, I'd be able to receive this increase. I'm kind of curious.
Well, no, you can't get a current council-
Correct, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't get it no matter what happens, unless I ran for reelection and got it in 2023. I understand that, but there are currently members on this council and non-members running for three seats that this could potentially affect, I'm understanding, as early as next year.
Yes.
That makes me a little wary about-
I would say that council could put in their own language on here, that this wouldn't go into effect until after the 2023 election, or whatever you want.
I would propose we add that language. That's just my thought, just because I think that that language is weird, the 90 days before May, I feel like there may have been an attempt behind it to that be before election, but-
I'm wondering if it had to do with the primaries?
Yeah.
And the primaries were previously in May.
Right.
So I know ours were always in the, ours are in May, with the last charter, it was September.
You had to have your-
Right, but now they're-
By July 3rd or 4th.
Well, now it's my, I'm assuming that that was probably changed with the charter review, just because at that point-
It was May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that might have been just an oversight on the language.
Yeah.
I'm just wary about making a change to compensation of a council position after petition deadlines have passed. That's just my thought on it.
I know everyone here knows my feeling on the council raises anyways, but I do think that if this is going to pass, even if I'm not going to be behind it, I think that that would be the best outcome, because I'm not saying that it's a whole bunch of money that would encourage someone to want to run for it, but you already have the seats selected for this, or not the seats, but the people running for this. I think that would set a bad precedent to pass this for an upcoming election.
Ms. Smith, am I not mistaken that you would be up in 2023, so that would apply to you, right?
It's if I ran for reelection.
Okay. It would apply to, let's, for hypothetical, all three people sitting here who are running get reelected, all four people who are sitting here get reelected in 2023, it would apply to all seven of you beginning January 1st of 2024.
No, I don't think so, because I think the three-
It wouldn't apply to the next term.
Would have to wait till-
That's correct.
Yes, I'm sorry.
2025.
You are correct, I apologize, Mayor. So it would apply to the four who got elected-
Whoever runs.
-in '23, January 20 of '24, and the three who were midterm would not then be able to get it until 2026, when those seats were up again in '25.
So in other words, everybody that's up here, it would not affect until they won again, and so three members that are up there, they potentially have to win twice.
Well, and I have, I have a comment I was going to make on that. First of all, there's no guarantee these three are going to be reelected.
Okay.
And I don't mean that, you know, I'm not being, I'm just stating a fact, and in light of that, they could potentially be voting for their replacement- in light of that, they could potentially be voting for their replacement to get the raise, correct?
Yes.
Right. Second of all, my other issue, or concern, or whatever you wanna call it, is, um, only giving president of council five hundred dollars more.
We're not doing that at all right now, because.
Well, right.
Drafted that way.
Right. Right. But my point is, considering all the work they do, I don't think that's adequate. I think it should be less, a lot more myself, but.
I have no comment. I'm, I'm, how, that's before, you know, but.
So that's a potential amendment you may wanna see on the next reading.
You know, I, I was just wondering if we can even, um, give a little background about why this was ever brought up. It was just, and I think Councilman Coleman said that it was Bowling Green had, had, you, you'd asked for what, what the wages were for council members in our surrounding areas. And Bowling Green, I think, just passed, we're, and that's what we're looking at, is, is the, uh, O-Pers.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good reply. So I'll.
Gotta make that clear to everyone, so I were even bringing this up.
We're reviewing all employees' wages. And part of that discussion, the, the administration did a great job, because we were waiting on this wage compensation study. Uh, it started before I was ever on council. Uh, we were waiting on that, and, and the administration did a great job of giving us comparable numbers for different communities throughout the state that involved, uh, the positions and the pay bands that we talked about previously, the department heads and the, the employees under them. Uh, but part of that, I asked them to go ahead and just add to the spreadsheet, council members and mayor, because it'd been a while since we reviewed that in Perrysburg. Uh, while that was going on and we were getting that information, Bowling Green passed legislation tying their council salary to the PERS minimum. Uh, so there's a PERS minimum that goes out, looks like till twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, it basically, what that is, is the amount, uh, that you need to make to get one credit of PERS, uh, one PERS credit for the year. Um, and it would, this, uh, ordinance would tie council's wages to that chart. So it, it go through the PERS increases so that they're getting one service credit. Uh, right now, I think council members make, is it seventy-five-hundred a year?
Yes.
So seventy-five-hundred a year, we're talking twenty-twenty-one, the PERS minimum is eighty-two, eighteen, thirty-two. Okay, so we're not, it's not a substantial increase. I don't think anybody up here is doing it for the money. Uh, but one thing that, that makes sense is to have a, a salary schedule that has incremental increases for a period of time and get a public service credit for it, in my opinion, uh, which is why this is before council.
Right.
Same with the mayor's wage while we're.
Yeah, just to put it in perspective, we're not talking about a whole lot of money here. It's seven hundred dollars for a year. And I just wanted to make sure that was, that was pointed out, and it's.
I'll go like the prime ribbon carrot cake in Toledo, so.
And in fact, it's actually probably gonna end up costing a council member money every month to be a council.
Yeah, that, I mean, right, we, we've had that, talked about that before. We're, um, that, I think it's important we at least get that O-Pers a minimum, because like I said, we have a council member that doesn't make enough, uh, from council to pay for the insurance she has to, you know. Okay, I'll, everything she makes.
And just a couple of comments, you know, just to not, just to separate the ninety days before May as a mayoral issue, it's not a council issue. Just to separate that.
So the compensation for the mayor, is, the established salary of the mayor is.
Oh, I think, what's just do.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, let's just do one word at a time.
So I was just clarifying that. I think maybe we're using the mayoral stipulation to affect the council decision-making.
So the ordinance for the council says, established salary of members in respect to succeeding term of office, such change must be made by council ninety days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in May. Period. And has no additional language.
Ms. Sandretto?
Yes.
Are you reading from the charter? Is that where you have?
Section three, three point oh, yes.
Thank you.
So it still has that ninety day language. It's just way more ambiguous than the mayoral language.
Which makes one eligible and not the other.
Correct.
So, in, in, Corey, I think you said a little bit ago, that I don't think, based on the income, anybody's doing this for the money. And so, so if, if these three new people come on council, just because they petitioned, they have to wait literally five years to, to, we'll say, receive another ninety dollars a month. So if, if that's gonna be done to them, whoever the new three people are, then maybe we should do it for the next cycle as well, and make them wait. I'm just saying, at what point is it okay? Because the three people that will win this next election didn't do it for the money. So we could just wait six or eight years, because it's not for the money.
I, I completely, I, I agree. I, I honestly will support either version of it. Um, I didn't wanna put anybody that's running in the race, because I know it's not about money, Mary.
I know, I, I know.
Frankly, and I, I don't wanna put you in a position where you're talking about it while you're, you're running. Um, uh, honestly, I would support it either way. I think it makes a lot of sense, because I don't think anybody, anybody that is running for council for a money grab or a PERS credit is doing it for the wrong reasons. Um, so I, I, I would absolutely support that it be immediate effect. Uh, the, the only thing I caution, or I have caution about is, we're, we're making a change after people have lost the opportunity to run for council, and we're increasing.
And I would just say if they're doing it because of that, then they're doing it for the wrong reason. So, I mean, that's just my pushback. So I appreciate the dialogue about this, though.
I would agree with both Mr. Smith and Mr. Van Hoozen. Um, I am, I am in complete agreement. I am not in this for the money as well, and I appreciate hearing that from them as well. I agree with you both.
Okay, any other comments, um, uh, from council? We're just, the ordinance is written as presented. This, do you want us to have a second language or not?
There's potential anybody can make a motion and.
All right, that's, we'll just leave it as somebody would have to make a motion.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. Okay. Any other comments or questions about ordinance?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, thank you very much.
All right, and then I will go ahead. I know we talked a little bit about it, but I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two-one and move that the rules be suspended to allow for a treaty by number and title only.
Jackson?
Roll call?
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, which resolution was this one?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay, uh, yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-two, two thousand twenty-one, amending codified ordinance two-thirty-point-zero-one of the city of Perrysburg codified ordinances, codified by ordinance ninety-three, two thousand eight, and passed on July eighth, two thousand eight.
Right, um, just to give background on this, I believe we're asking for an increase in the mayoral wage from twenty-eight thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, I am for that, but I, I believe this should go through three readings. Uh, with that, I'll yield to anybody else that wants to comment or discuss it.
I agree with you, Mr. Coleman.
Just to clarify, since we had the ninety day discussion, this would not be applicable to our current mayor, because this did not happen.
The next mayor, whoever gets elected.
This would not be applicable to.
Mayor elected.
Mayor elected November of this year, because it did not happen ninety days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in May of the last year of the term, then being served by the mayor.
So in other words, by the time that Mayor Mackin is termed out, we have decided we will pay the next mayor more?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
That is who it will affect.
People are rushing, get this out.
All right.
Out of curiosity, with that thirty-five thousand, we're, I know you said that there was a study done on that. What was, or at least a?
Um, I believe Bowling Green changed theirs to forty-five thousand. Uh, we're right in the ballpark. There's some, uh, you know, around here, what you realize is a lot of the municipalities were set up by, on the same scheme, on the same case team. Uh, so I believe Mami is the last.
So Vani, I think, is the smallest, thirty-three.
Yeah. Uh, does Ottawa Hills even collect money? I know their council was zero.
Ottawa Hills really was totally different.
It, it was kind of an array. Uh.
Thirty-five would definitely not be out of line, especially in four years from now, correct? You gotta figure that, that, we're, we're voting for something that's gonna be for twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah.
I know, twenty, yes.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-five, so.
Effectually.
By then, it might need to go higher.
Feel like a buck an hour, but.
Yeah.
Well worth it.
Dollar an hour, yeah.
So, and the thought behind me proposing this, uh, 'cause I am the one that brought both of these, uh, kind of to the forefront, is that there's, there's quite a bit of expectations that the mayor be, uh, a present body at a lot of events, a lot of night times. You know, you're seeing it here tonight. Uh, you'll see him at the Wood County Place openings, uh, making speeches or ribbon cuttings. Um, and I think there's an accountability, and I don't think the, the salary necessarily reflects that currently. Uh, so, uh, that's why we revisited it. All right, and that concludes my report, I believe. Next personnel meeting, I don't even have the date here. Twenty-fourth is September twenty-eighth, I believe. At five P.
No, there's one in August, yeah.
Oh, is there? Oh, yeah.
There's one in August.
I'm, I'm too far down.
Yeah.
The twenty-fourth, at five P.M.
All right, very good, thank you. Um, person, or, uh, Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did have a meeting called to order on July twentieth at seven oh three P.M. by Chairman Jonathan Smith. The members present were Jam Attorney, as well as Jonathan Smith. Also present were Bridget Cabot, the Administrator, I mentioned Deputy Director of Public Utilities. We approved the many minutes, we'll see that. Sewer credit for two-twenty Locust Street. Mr. Schelmer reported that Anthony back of two-twenty Locust Street had a water line rupture in the crawl space of an unoccupied home. Mr. Beck is requesting a sewer credit in the amount of two thousand three hundred thirty dollars and seventy-two cents, and this would leave a balance due of three thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, Mr. Beck has also requested that he be allowed to pay one-third of the balance now, with the balance to be paid within six months. The committee agreed two O to recommend approval of the credit and the payment plans, and they asked the penalty amount be recalculated to reflect the sewer credit. Uh, so with that, I would like to make a motion of exactly what I read.
I second the motion exactly as you read it.
Make it a little easier, so I don't have to hear it twice.
Roll call?
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, we had appeal for refund from two-six-six-zero-nine Greenville. Uh, Mr. Schelmer reported the owner of, uh, of that address had requested a refund for water charges in the amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty cents for December twenty-twenty to June of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, again, this is water charges. So because of the water backup, some pump. They did not pay any sewer charges because of some pump is plumbed to the sprinkler meter. Uh, Mr. Smith said, so he feels for them, but the water was used and the city council does not have the authority to grant a credit for water charges. Uh, Mr. Schelmer said that, uh, they are looking at a fixed base system that will be able to catch this type of situation much more quickly. Uh, Ms. Matroni stated that she saw in the documentation, we notified them of this problem back in February. Uh, sewer credit tabulation, uh, we had a report, and there was only one new, uh, sewer credit under a thousand dollars reported. And then, uh, we had a request for vehicle purchase. Ms. Cabot requested approval of the purchase of three trucks for the Department of Public Utilities for the Perrysburg Auto Mall for one hundred thirty-three thousand ninety-one dollars. She said the mechanics evaluated the fleet and ranked the vehicles. These three trucks would, would replace the worst of the worst and bring the average age of the vehicles from ten years to eight. She said that they are trying to get a rotation for vehicle replacement. Mr. Smith asked what is being done with the old trucks. Ms. Cabot said that we sold it auction, and that request will come before city council the next couple of months. She said the total value of all three vehicles is probably less than ten thousand dollars. There was some discussion regarding vehicles for the twenty-twenty-two budget, and the committee agreed two O to recommend approval of the vehicle purchase. Uh, next on the agenda was a Fort Megs Road bike and pedestrian side path. Ms. Cabot stated that the administration is looking at adding a Fort Megs roads multi-use path to the twenty-twenty-two budgets in conjunction with the, uh, Fort Megs Road ditch project. She said Ms. Gossi is putting together an RFP for the design for cleaning out the ditch and configuring the multi-use path. Another business, uh, Mr. Smith had asked about overflows. Ms. Cabot said there were two over the weekend, one at Louisiana and one at Elm. There was a brief discussion about recent news reports about the city of Mami dumping the river, and about our efforts working with the Ohio E.P. and the N.P.D.S. permit. Ms. Matroni asked how the proposed legislation that bans dumping sewage in the Mami would affect us. Ms. Cabot said it would affect us, uh, because all communities have overflow. There being no further business, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August twenty-fifth at six thirty P.M. And with that, I do have a resolution regarding the truck purchases. So I would like to introduce Resolution forty-four, twenty-twenty, and move the rules be suspended to allow for it to re-invite number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Okay.
Roll call?
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution forty-four, two thousand twenty-one, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Perrysburg Auto Mall in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-three thousand ninety-one dollars for the purchase of three two thousand twenty-one GMC Sierra trucks for the Perrysburg Department of Public Utilities and declaring an emergency.
Awesome. I move that Resolution forty-four, twenty-twenty-one be passed as emergency measure.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call?
I have one thing. I'm just very happy that we are using a Perrysburg business to buy our trucks.
Roll call?
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
All right, that is the end of the Public Utilities Report.
Thank you. Uh, Service Committee?
Meeting was called to order at five thirty-five P.M. by Chairperson Jam Attorney. Committee members present were Corey Coleman, Jam Attorney Jonathan Smith. Also present was Bridget Cabot, the City Administrator, and Brian Thomas, City Engineer. There being no objections, the minutes of the meeting of May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, and July sixth, twenty-twenty-one meetings were approved. Um, citizens' concerns, Tima Cog Grant, um, and I'm gonna screw up these names, and I'm sorry. It's just my weakness is names. Diane Fries, uh, three-eleven West Indiana Avenue was present to object to the city's Tima Cog Grant for multi-use bike path, multi-use path on Indiana Avenue. Ms. Ms. Fries said that two thousand and two voters voted against across town bike path by a sixty to forty vote. She said that people who supported her ringers brought them from other communities. She also said there are safety issues because there are too many curb cuts. It will damage outdoor seating at lamplight and driveway, and damaged driveways. She added that ten-foot path looks like a road to confused and drunk drivers. Tom Fries, three-eleven West Indiana Avenue, asked why it was last minute getting the letters out regarding the meeting. He said some of the users were not contacted. Mr. Fries also expressed concern about drainage issues. Ms. Cabot explained that it's not the city's usual procedure to notify property owners about a grant application. Ms. Matroni said she had not seen any plans yet. Ms. Cabot said that the design had not been done yet. She said that the grant request to Tima Cog is for a ten-foot wide multi-use path in the city right away on West Indiana Avenue between Louisiana Avenue and State Route twenty-five. She said if the grant is awarded construction will be in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-six. See, okay. Nancy Gates, five-four-four East Indiana Avenue, said that it's a philosophical issue, and Tima Cog is driven by where the money is. She said that they do not look at Perrysburg and what is good for us. She said there are already alleys that are ten feet wide and concrete where bikes can travel easily and safely. She said the blacktop will go where the trees are, and blacktop over trees root roots is not a good thing. Sherry Maz, Mazus, I'm sorry, Mazinski, three-four-three West Indiana Avenue, said she is disappointed in lack of communication. Ms. Matroni said the administration is well aware of the desire of multi-use paths. She thus, she said this is a proposal, and if we don't get the grant, the project won't go forward. The committee had discussion regarding an alternative site of a multi-use path along State Route twenty-five from Indiana Avenue to the DDI. They asked if Mr. Thomas could come up with the estimate for that multi-use path and time to file a grant application. Mr. Tom, Thomas said that he believes he could. The committee agreed three to one and moved this on full city council, no recommendation. Student appointment for litter prevention, Kennedy Rowley, a senior at Perryford High School, was present, present to consider for a student appointment for litter prevention recycling board. Ms. Rowley said that she is Vice President of the Environmental Club and has spent many hours picking up litter. She said she would like to serve because she would like to help cause change and make the world better. The committee agreed three to zero to recommend approval of Ms. Ms. Rowley's appointment. Salt bids. Ms. Cabot stated the three bids were received for purchase of raw salt for twenty-one, twenty-two seater. The low bid was compass minerals at forty, fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents per ton. The city normally uses four thousand tons per year. The total cost is two hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. There are sufficient funds in this to cover the purchase. The committee agreed three to zero to advance it onto city council. Other business, Ms. Ms., at, Mr. Smith, sorry about that.
They call it.
It's written.
I know, so. Asked if the administration looked into walking light indicators yet. Ms. Cabot said it is in her budget folder to discuss with the director of public service and the engineer. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:53 p.m. Respectfully submitted by Jam Attorney. Next meeting is Wednesday, 25th, 2021. With that, I would like to introduce ordinance Resolution 44-20...
Forty-five. Forty-five.
Oh. Sorry about that.
Close enough.
I forgot to change my papers.
45-2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second, third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 45-2021, accepting the bid and authorizing an agreement with Compass Mineral for winter road salt for the 2021, 2022 season.
I move that Resolution 45-2021 be passed. I'm sorry, what?
I don't think it's a request. I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes. Okay. Service has two resolutions before us for multi-use bike pass. Multi-use pass, one is along with West Boundary Avenue, and the other one's along Indiana. At this time, I'm going to read them out of order because Service recommends that we go with the one I'm going to read first. Resolution 47, I would like to introduce Resolution 47-2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second, third readings.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 47-2021, authorizing the city engineer to pursue a Akag transportation alternate program TAP grant for the construction of a multi-use path along West Boundary Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that Resolutions 47-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
I have discussion. We're referring to 47, correct?
Right.
Okay, what I'm noticing on here is it says installation of a multi-use path along the north side of Indiana Avenue from West Boundary to Louisiana, approximately 3,000... Okay, are we on 47 or are we on 41?
Forty-seven.
Forty-six, sorry.
Forty-seven is the one.
Okay, so we are on 47. I noticed that both of these were applied for already prior to this. One of them was on July 30th, the other one was on July 19th.
I don't think anything was applied for.
No, we haven't applied for anything yet.
It can't be applied for without...
That's what we're voting on.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
You may recall at the Service Committee that the deadline was two days or three days after the last Service Committee. And what we discussed at that Service Committee meeting was turning in both of the applications and letting Akag know that city council was taking place on August 17th and that we would give them indication tomorrow morning if both applications should be pulled or if one should be pulled.
Okay, my apologies.
Any other discussion? Okay, no other discussion? Sure. We were talking about 47, not 46, yeah.
I'm sorry, so this one across town, Indiana.
No, no, this is... This is... This 47 is pursuant to discussions. And this is now on State Route 25.
Oh.
Forty-seven is because based on the conversation, it was felt that we should submit two applications in case one was not... Okay, so this is on West Boundary. Roll call.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
No.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Okay, the second resolution that I'm introducing to you...
You don't have to introduce it if you don't want to.
Right, but when I don't want to...
So we're taking no action.
Right, we are not taking any action on this one, Service.
Unless someone wants to bring it up forward.
No.
Hold on, there's... The Service Committee is not bringing forward 46-2021 at this time.
Correct, at this time, we are not bringing it forward.
So there's nothing across town on Indiana Avenue at this time.
Correct.
Unless somebody wants to make a resolution on that from council. But there is no pending for it.